Good evening. We're live, so. I wish to, we opened the Board of Selectance meeting for September 9th, 2019 at 6 o'clock, then went into executive session. We're now moving off executive session into our meeting. I'll start by reading our statement as required by open meeting law. You are hereby informed that the town will video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or videotape this meeting must notify the chairman prior to the start of the meeting. If there's anyone so inclined. And I will move then to discuss executive session. We met on two items. The first one was asking our endorsement of the Real Estate and Open Space Committee going to CP, Community Preservation Funds. That's for support of buying property on Cherokee Road in Harwich. And we approved that to provide some funding for an appraisal to allow them to move ahead. The second item we discussed was a HEA, Union Discussion that is ongoing and most likely will be resolved tomorrow. So I'll move then to Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First time weekly briefing. Chris, you wanted to give us just a brief update of...
Yes, Mr. Chairman. You had asked me to provide information to the community in regards to the construction schedule on what's known as Contract One of Phase Two. So the Robert Auer Company, who's doing the installation work, has indicated that for this week, they anticipate mainline sewer crew would be on Cemetery and Compass, and they will commence installation on Herndon Road. And then a second crew would commence work on Route 137, starting at the old Queen Anne Road section. I believe that that cut is going to be... ...active detours. And for 9/16 to 9/20, which is a week out, continue on Herndon Road, commencement on Joanna's Path, and a continued installation on 137. And the week after that is continuation on Joanna's Path and continued on 137. So just to provide people at the early part of the meeting what the construction schedule is. And it was brought to my attention last week about the need to update some of the signage, some of the warning signs we have out there, so we're going to look at that tomorrow and have some of the updates made.
And I do note that we have a footnote. These schedules can change somewhat due to weather or availability of road crews, but those are the best we have at the moment. Any other, anyone else for... Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we're already nine days into September, and just because I noticed it today, we've got to update those electronic signs because they're saying coming August that the project is going to begin.
Yeah, that's what I just said. I was made aware of it. We'll have it out tomorrow.
Yeah, I couldn't get out of my neighborhood this morning, so. Let's move on to anyone else for weekly briefing. Mr. Clark?
Evening, Board. Mr. Chairman, I just want to announce two things. Good news is, Fire Department is receipt of a grant for $93,773 for some rescue equipment. The best way to describe it is jaws of life. Our, the equipment we're using now is aged, outdated, and we were very fortunate. It's like one in 2,000 people get these grants, FEMA grants. It's a, it's a assistance to firefighter grants, but these tools are much needed. Airbags, struts, hold things up, and jaws of life. We actually are going through a new technology. It's battery-operated tools, so we don't need quite as much hose, quite as, you know, the gasoline-powered engines, hydraulic pumps. So we're very fortunate to get this grant. I want to thank the Deputy Chief, Deputy LeBlanc. A lot of work went into this. There was a match for about $4,400 that we did budget. So that's really good news for, for not the Fire Department, for the town, for the citizens. We would have had to make this a budget item, and so we were able to take $93,000, almost $94,000 off of what we would be needing. Also, I want to remind the Board and everyone at home that let's, let's not forget, 18 years ago, 9/11, we're, we are going to do that again, and that will be at Quarter of Ten at the main station. We've tried for years. Many Fire Departments across the country were successful in getting pieces of one of the towers. And we just recently were able to get a piece. And it means a lot to us, and it should mean a lot to all of us, to remind us what happened on that day, to how it affected all of us. So we will be dedicating that new piece of steel. We were able to work with a local monument company. Tom Blut was very helpful in getting some nice granite posts for this, so I hope folks will turn out and help us recognize and acknowledge that day. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. I'm waiting for Carolyn to bring up her...
Thank you. Well, you all know me, but more importantly, I don't know if you all know Cole Strzepak. Have you met Cole?
Hello.
Hello, Cole.
So Cole came with a wonderful idea. He is doing a campaign, Collecting Socks for Smiles, Cole Smiles. So I'm not going to tell you. Erica can tell you much better than I can. But we just started filling our sock meter in. We have way more than this many, but it takes me a long time to count. So anyone who wants to help us counting all the socks, come on over. So Erica will tell you all about it.
Hi, Erica Strzepak. So Cole, Cole suffers from intractable epilepsy, and he has been in and out of the hospital quite a lot this season. And actually, our wonderful Fire Department and Police Department has been at the house several times helping us. But this last go-around, when we were up at Children's Hospital, one of the things that I always do, Cole's typically bed-bound because he's on electrodes. You go down to Child Life, and they always have fun things, including socks. So this last time I was there, they had one pair of socks left. It just happened to fit Cole, and then they had some baby socks. So, you know, that was that. He was thrilled. You know, we were there for four days. When we got home, it was, where's my fuzzy socks? And I'm like, oh, they haven't been washed yet. So I said, hey, listen, you know, the basket was empty. Maybe we should collect some socks for the other friends up at Children's. So Cole was super excited. Cole loves to make people smile and laugh. He's not doing any jokes this evening, but, you know. So I brought the idea to Carolyn to see if it would be okay that we would collect socks at the community center. And I have to say how wonderful the public has been, and it's really taken off. And not only are we getting socks from here in the Harwich area, but from afar. Someone messaged me that once the hurricane was over, she was mailing us socks from Florida. Kat Wilson from the radio station reached out to me super early, and she's been running it on the radio station, which is how Cindy Williams got involved for this weekend's hometown parade. And the DPW so generously was looking to collect socks and fill the DPW truck. So it's been a tremendous amount of fun. We are now looking for a few other partnership hospitals to kind of share the wealth with other children and young adults in the hospital. And it's really wonderful that all of this can come out of something so difficult for my child, but we can share some positiveness from Cape Cod to the other childrens out there. So just wanted to thank you all for participating. We are filling in our sock count, and this only represents a half an hour worth of counting. So yes, we've got a long way to go, so.
Well, Carolyn, excuse me, go ahead.
I don't have fun going to the hospital, but I know that there, when I spent two weeks with probes on my head, I had a little fun because of all my friends coming down, saying hi, sending me stuff. And it was, I just, I don't like epilepsy, but I'm staying strong. And all the time, my friends in the hallway at school, Cole, you feeling good? Do you have any seizures? Yeah. And I remember at the hospital, I had some fun. I met Gronk and the New England Revolution. It was, it was fun.
Second only to meeting these...
I took a selfie with him, and his brother photobombed us.
Right, right.
Yeah, and it's fun telling jokes to the people.
We're not doing jokes tonight.
Well, one joke would be okay.
No, 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 no.
No, no. What did the baby mosquito say to his mother after his first flight? Mama, mama, they're clapping at me.
Thank you.
Okay, good.
Thank you very much. And there are several drop-off locations there in the Chatham Police Department, Chatham Fire. The community center, of course.
High School. All of Harwich Elementary School is going to be doing it. There's a couple other businesses in town. The Chamber of Commerce has been really helpful in organizing.
Just call us if you need to know where to get them.
And you can find more about the campaign at Cole Socks for Smiles online.
Thank you. So I just wanted to...
Did you get an autograph from...
He did. No autograph, but several pictures.
Okay. Carolyn?
The next, the next thing is that we are still collecting for the Day of Service, the September 11th, for the veterans. You can, there's a drop-off box at the community center as well, and they're looking for canned foods, toiletries, non-perishable foods, grocery store gift cards. So these, this is also on the community center webpage as well. The next thing is that Hutcha Truck Event is on September 28th. This is a great time. It is a free event, and I feel really bad standing up here talking about it because it's truthfully because of police and fire, the Highway Department, the Water Department. I just get to take all the glory. So it is just that. They can come into the recreation side of the parking lot. We have an ice cream truck. And it's just a great time to get to see what the town offers. It is for old and young alike. I'll be honest, I see more older individuals climbing on the equipment than the kids, but that's good, too. We want everyone to come out. So that's on the 28th, another free event at the community center. If you're coming, you might want to drop off your costume, your gently-used costume, because we're also collecting for our boutique, which is coming up. So pretty much, bring anything you have to the community center. Socks, costumes, food, we'll take it all. We'll separate it out for everyone. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Taking my sock. Taking my sock.
It was an honor meeting him. He was so peaceful.
Very nice.
Emily will be right with you.
No, take your time. It's an important picture.
He's a very nice man.
Fantastic.
Thanks, Cole.
Nice work, Cole.
Cole, thank you.
We'll make time for you, Emily, I guess.
Thank you. I'm Emily Mitchell, Council on Aging Director. Just a very brief announcement. On September 24th, we are doing a volunteer recognition barbecue at the Council on Aging. We could not provide anywhere near the scope of services we offer without our volunteers. We have close to 100 who help us in varying capacities. So it's going to be a pretty informal event. It's Tuesday, September 24th, from 12 to 2:00. With the help of the Fire Association, we have their, letting us use their grills. So we'll have hamburgers and hot dogs, pasta salad, potato salad, veggie salad, all the good fixins. It will happen rain or shine. We're hoping to be in the back fields, but if it's too cold or raining, we have space inside as well. So really, anyone who's volunteered with us at the council or with our nonprofit partner, the Friends of the Harwich Council on Aging, please give us a call. Our phone number is (508) 430-7550 for anyone listening at home. We would love to have you. It's going to be a fun event, and really thank you for everything that you do for us. Thanks.
Anyone else for weekly briefing? If not, public comment, and I, we did ask Lee Culver to give us a, basically a wrap-up report of the tornado activities.
We had our after-action meeting on the 15th of August. We sat down with all the departments involved over at the EOC at the police facility, and obviously, this is an event that you can't plan for. Hurricanes, we usually get a few days' notice. This event, we got 15 minutes' notice, and then another 15 minutes in mass destruction. Access to the town was completely blocked from all ways. We had people and children who were at the community center that had to be put into the locker rooms while the event was taking place. And we had seniors over there also, so we didn't want to, they didn't want to put them in the basement. We, because you don't use elevators during events like this. So they put everybody in the locker room. The staff at the community center certainly stepped up, as well as the staff at the library. When the event was, when you got your notice on your cellphone from the National Weather Service, people just started pulling into the library and getting undercover. Some person's car got a tree on it over there. I mean, this was something I haven't seen in my 40 years around here. And the damage is unmanageable, but as you saw, doesn't take much. So we sat down with all our department heads. We did, I think, a good job of what we, what we were dealing with. We obviously had some areas that we can improve on, communications, particularly with our department heads in our area buildings. You kind of forget they're out there when you're at the EOC and you're dealing with block roads and people calling the police and fire station needing assistance, and us knowing you can't get there. The engineer has offered to update our mapping so that we have a better map of the, of the town, and he's going to maybe tie into some GIS stuff at the, at the Water Department. We're in the process of updating our emergency alert system so that we'll be able to send text messages, we'll be able to have working groups within the, within the system so that we keep our department heads apprised of what's going on out there. Because obviously, if you're stuck at the community center or at the library or the harbor or wherever, you have no idea what, what roads are open or what aren't. So we need to get those kinds of words out, out there. EverSource did a great job, but I'm, I have to tell you, EverSource had 1,100 crews, linemen, tree crews, down-wire guards, supervisors, but they were dealing with six towns. So the power was back within 36 hours. If this was a hurricane and affected all of Cape Cod, we'd probably still have people without power. Because they, like I said, they could pour all these assets into six different towns and get things taken care of. And they did. They had two people in our EOC here in Harwich dealing directly with problems. So they stepped up to the plate for this event, which is, which is good. Team Rubicon was into town. They helped out a lot of our seniors that had trees down, needed yard work or work on the house. Emily over at the Council on Aging got saddled with being their go-to person for dealing with issues. And then they left town, and the Southern Baptist Disaster Relief Group came into town. Emily also got saddled with, with being their liaison. They worked with the Highway Department so that they had a place to get fuel, and Carolyn set them up at the Cultural Center as a place to, they could lay down and rest. All in all, we did a, we did a fantastic job, I think. We've, we gotta, better get the word out to our residents. And once the power goes down, basically, the only way to do that is probably cellphone and the technology today. Because anybody that has a Comcast phone knows, when the power goes, you don't have a phone. So we're going to work on trying to educate our residents, especially our seniors, on things they can do. And the other thing that really slipped my mind is the EMD. We have new town department heads. They had no clue how we, how we do events like this. So we're working on coming up with some type of information sheet so that they're aware of how we handle events. And the other thing is, we had, this happened in July. The town was full of visitors. They didn't know where the tech school was. They didn't know where DY was. They didn't know where to get food. So I'm going to try and sit down with Cindy at the chamber and see if we can come up with a fact sheet so that they can give it out in the summer so that visitors will have some idea of, of where they can go to get help. I think that's basically it. Have I covered everything, Chris?
Yeah, I think, you know, it was definitely lessons learned in terms of it. I think our initial response was, was outstanding. I think the focus on getting the power back on was important. And then I think having that wrap-up meeting was good because I think we need to improve communication. I know we've updated the phone list. We generally have people with a fair amount of turnover, so having an updated phone list to make sure we can keep plugged in with everyone, I think, is important. You probably saw on the Hurricane Dorian that I tried to send out some early action things as we knew things were coming to kind of alert people and give them a heads-up to pre-plan. The insurance company does send us certain things to prep for some of the buildings, so we're trying to relay that. But I think we'll continue to make improvements, obviously, in, in terms of our reaction, but...
Thank you, Lee.
Thanks, Lee.
One question I have, Lee, is on the initial communication. You know, we're looking around, and you're right. You have Comcast, you're dead. You don't have that. And, you know, we have several local radio stations. As far as I understand, they, they continue playing their tape program, or whatever their national programs were. Do we have any influence in asking them to cut through that and try to get out? Because almost everyone has a radio, even with no power.
I've been dealing with Mass Emergency Management for probably eight years. They're supposed to have radio stations that are broadcasting during events such as the tornado, hurricane, blizzards. It used to be WCOD here on the Cape. That's all changed. I'm still working, I'm still working with MIMA. They're having a personnel changeover, and the young lady that's taken over this region is doing an outstanding job, so we're, we're working on that. And we're working on getting access to our, to have the ability to alert cell phones for Harwich residents. But that's a process, it's an application process we're going to have to go through with the, with the state. I'm probably going to need some push from the Board when we get ready to do that, but...
My, my second comment is, in the, in the past, you've used the flu shot exercises, kind of an exercise of overall. Do you feel we need to do something comparable to that in sort of a mock drill of a hurricane or something?
Well, we did a, we did a tabletop last May? A year ago May, I guess. We've done a tabletop that was designed for us by one of the emergency management students at Mass Maritime. We could do an exercise. I think we learned quite a bit just from this, from this tornado, to be honest with you.
Yeah, okay.
And, and, you know, we're talking, town employees make up the emergency management team for the most part, so.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, Ed?
In terms of making contact with radio stations?
Yes.
I know if you contact the station manager at WOMR, because the benefit with them is you're never breaking into prerecorded national. It's all local folks, and you call them up, and you can talk to the DJ, and if there's a special announcement, they'll put it out.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
No, just thank you.
Just thank you, Tim. You know, again, we keep, we can't find enough ways to thank all the people for pulling...
Well, I tell you, there's two things. I don't normally like to single out people because I know I'll miss somebody, but Su Dushel, it was her birthday, the day of the tornado. She came into the community center and stayed until every senior was home and safe. And most times, she rode the bus with that senior, walked into their house with them to check that they were okay. And I had asked Emily to bring Linda St. Pierre in, because I knew we were going to have a lot of people that needed food. And Linda got in from Yarmouth, I don't know how, but she did. And she stayed and cooked and cooked and cooked till we cooked her out of everything they had over there. So they did an outstanding job, and they're two people that I always lean on to get the job done, because you can tell them what you need, and then you don't worry about it because you know it's going to get done. That's all I have.
Thank you much.
Thanks.
Moving on to consent agenda?
Yeah. Public, public announcements still?
Public announcements, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, I understand last week, we had a wonderful program at the community center with the visitors from the Cape Verde Islands. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend. It was the last planning meeting of the committee for the Cranberry Festival. Unfortunately, this weekend's weather took out the first event, unfortunately. It was just unattenable, given the wind and the wet weather to do beach days. But coming up next, this Saturday and Sunday, the Cranberry Festival will be in action. And, and sort of, with the program last week at the community center noting the, sort of, the Cape Verde in heritage, I was given this a couple weeks ago, or a couple months ago, and I was going to save it for Festival Day, but it sort of is something to talk about our other heritage of, of our namesake town in London. And this is a letter that was given to the Cranberry Festival in August 1987, and it's from 10 Downing Street, from the Prime Minister. It reads, "I'm delighted to join with your visitors from Harwich, England, in sending my greetings to the officials and residents of Harwich, Cape Cod, at the time of your Cranberry Harvest Festival. I know that your visitors from Essex will feel at home in Cape Cod. They'll be assured a wonderful welcome and enjoy the generous hospitality, which I remember so well from my own visits to the United States. I wish you all the best wishes for a successful Cranberry Harvest Festival and a prosperous, peaceful future. Margaret Thatcher." Interesting thing to bring forth with the festival coming up. I hope you all can make it. It's going to be a very good time.
Don, you want to comment on the Cape Verdean?
Yeah, actually, it was really heartening to see outpouring camaraderie and love, actually, between the Harwich residents and President Tavoris. With all due respect, the thing that I, that comes out of that meeting was the fact that it's not a sister relationship with Brava. In point of fact, the forebears, the forefathers that came off of that island from the early 1800s forward actually helped build this community. They're us. So it, it was great to see that the gym was full. It, it's good to remind the younger people about their heritage because this place was built through the efforts of the Cape Verde residents.
Thank you. It was, it was a great event. I, I hate to always, to be reminded how stupid I am, but I, I knew little of the history. It was very educational. I think our chore as a board and as a town is to continue that, this milestone on how we educate and bring people along, what our culture is, and continue that activity. and bring people along with what our culture is and continue that activity. Just a side comment, I did get a kick out of, one of the issues that was, that was discussed was the loss of their language. And one person got up and said, "Part of the problem was, the only time they spoke their native language is when they didn't want the kids to understand what they were talking about." So, there you go.
Just one more thing, Mr. Chair, to add to that. We're hoping, I mean, I did, I did a lot of studying with Albert and Angie and Brenda. We're hoping he'll come back again in another year or so. But just so everybody understands, especially if you didn't attend this, this is a youngish guy who's taken over, he's really a reformer. And one of the reasons he wants to rekindle the relationship is he's really looking for people who left through the decades and to be able to help with an economic resurgence there. Like for hosp, building a hospital, building a library, building a school. So, when he comes back, I think that that's what the discussion's gonna be. Is how can we help partner to elevate Brava to, to a point where he wants it to be?
Thank you, Don. Anyone else for public comment? If not, then we'll, we'll move this time, Steve, to consent agenda?
Yeah, just one item on the consent agenda. Accept the resignation of Frank Boyle from the Harwich Board of Health effective 8/15/2019.
I'll second that.
Second. Frank's been an outstanding member of the Board of Health for a number of years. So, I, I hate to see him go. And I tried to play to his, tried to control him to stick around, but he's wanted, he's been there some time. And I was unsuccessful.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too tried making a run at him. But I do want everyone to know, he's not leaving because he didn't enjoy the job. He was a terrific representative of the town. He's gonna be sorely missed. But he has some, both family and business things that he wants to pursue. Sometime in the future, he says, he would love to come back and help again.
Yeah, okay. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearings, notice of proposed amendment to the harbor management plan. John, do you wish to, Chris, you wanna start this or you're called?
John can do the overview.
Okay, John. We, we heard a lot of this, I think, last week and so...
Sure. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, John Rendon, Harbor Master. I put in your packet the proposed change as, as stated by the chairman. I was here two weeks ago with an appeal relating to the definition of length overall. And as I stated back then, I would be in front of you to recommend a change to the harbor management plan to try to make the definition and how we determine length of vessel when it comes to both payment of a dockage fee and determining the physical space within the harbor. We needed to make it a little clearer. So, what I've put in your packet is two sections that are affected. One is section two, which is definitions. And what I've done is highlighted in red is the additional language that I've put in. I highlighted in blue with a line-out the sections that I'm taking out. So, if I could, just look at length overall definitions. The new definition would be, "For the purpose of determining mooring classification and maximum capacity of a slip, LOA is defined as the furthest extension of the bow to the furthest extension of stern, including aft extension of outboard motors when tipped up and/or anchored davits." So, that's the new definition that will be listed in section two. I've also added a definition, manufactured length. So, for years, there has been a restriction with regards to the mooring field in Allen Harbor. It's pretty tight in there. We have 66 moorings. And I think even before my time, there was, it wasn't in the plan. It has since been put in the plan back a couple of years ago. But there's always been, not always, but I don't know exactly when it was instituted, a 25-foot manufactured length restriction for boats that are gonna accept a mooring in Allen Harbor. That same restriction, a couple of years ago, we put in Heron River mooring field. As many of you know, a lot of people want bigger and bigger boats. And there's just limited room in some of these restricted mooring fields. So, currently, in section 3.4 of the harbor management plan, we state that there is a 25-foot manufactured length restriction for Allen Harbor and Heron River. But we didn't, we didn't define it. And I thought it was a good opportunity, since we're looking at length overall, to actually put the definition on manufactured length. And really, manufactured length is when you purchase a boat. Say, you're purchasing a Grady White from a manufacturer. You purchase a 24-foot Grady White. That's not including the swim platform that you may have, or the outboards that you may have, or the ankle pulpit. It's, it's just the hull. And that's the manufactured length. So, there is a difference. And I just, I'm gonna put it in the definition so it's a little clearer. There are also recommended changes in appendix B. So, we kinda talked about, our old definition for length overall was really put in place for determining dockage fees. And that was some of the confusion. So, that piece of the definition, we actually put it under appendix B because appendix B is, talks about rates. And so, if you look at the sheet, we have an asterisk. "Seasonal and year-round dockage fees are determined by measuring from top of transom to the foremost extension, including pulpit spritz or slip minimum, whichever is greater." So, that's really speaking to how we determine what somebody's dockage fees are. As I stated a couple of weeks ago, when a boat comes in to the harbor, if they have a permit and we measure, we go out and physically measure their boat to deter, to determine how much we're gonna charge per, per foot for that particular boat. And so, that is remaining in the harbor management plan under the fee structure. And, and that's really it. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions, Ed?
On the, on appendix B?
Yes, sir.
You have a couple of items that don't have any figure with it. Do you have a rough guess of, for a transient boater, what an overnight power charge would be?
We, we do have, what I gave you is not the full appendix B.
Okay.
I, I, I do have an appendix B, the, and I'll pull it up. I brought my plan just... So, power charge rates are listed in appendix B. Seasonal plug-in, it speaks to seasonal plug-in. You, our, our permitted slipholders can get a seasonal rate or a nightly rate. So, in, in your case of, your question, a transient boater comes in. If they use 30 amp, it's $8 a night. If they use 50 amp, it's $11 a night.
Michael?
Remove that we approve the amendments to the harbor management plan as presented.
Second.
Second. Is any more discussion? Anyone in the audience have a question, comment? If not, thank you, John. And all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
New business, confirmation of the town administration appointment of Julie K. Whitus as Program Specialist One at the Council on Aging. Chris, you wish to speak to this?
Yeah, actually, I just wanted to thank Emily and Jamie. They put together a lot of work to go through several applications. And they brought forth this Julie Whitus. I did meet with her. I think she's an excellent candidate. She is filling the position that Rick Anderson, who passed away, had. So, I do, I did make the appointment and ask for the confirmation of, from the board.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Michael?
Remove that we approve the town administrator's appointment of Julie K. Whitus as Program Specialist One at the Council on Aging.
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? Don?
Yeah, I just feel obligated to mention again that the Charter for non-department heads does not call for our confirmation. It calls for a window of rejection, if you will, if something doesn't work out over a period of time. So, and I don't know that we can waive it by voting this. I mean, I'd be willing to vote in favor of it, but the Charter says what the Charter says. And it is not a department head.
Yeah, and I think we all understand that. It's just a way to move it ahead.
I get that. I don't think we're waiving the, the probationary period, though.
Okay. Any more discussions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is noise violations by Amber Smith by Police Chief.
Mr. Chairman, on this one, we had the hearing today. It would be my hope that, in the hearing today, that there was certain findings that established these two violations are similar to, to the violations that were discussed today. So, I would like to have a, see if we can table this for a week or two to see if we can have kind of a, more of a global settlement to deal with what ultimately was six violations for this season. So, I would ask if we could table it for today and see if I can come back with something for next week or the week after. The attorneys are gonna be discussing the issue to see if we can have a resolution.
Is any concern with tabling it for, for a bit? We don't, we don't need to hold on this. We will. Chief, you're on board on this as well?
That's fine. I agree with that.
Okay, thank you.
I do appreciate the chief's testimony today. You know, he was kind of put on the spot to defend two of the officers and to provide oversight of that. And I thought he did a nice job representing the town's interests.
Okay, good. Will, we'll bring that back then when, when you're comfortable with it.
Thank you.
Okay. Item C of new business is 2019 Solarize Massachusetts Community, presented by Valerie Bell. And she's chair of the Harwich Energy Committee.
Right, Valerie Bell, Harwich Energy Committee. So, a little, little bit of history on, on this. Back in June, we had a visit to one, to our Harwich Energy Committee meeting from Mike Duffy. He is a member of the Yarmouth Energy Committee. And they were looking for Dennis, Harwich, and Yarmouth to get together to pursue Solarize Massachusetts program. Since then, I'm pretty sure Dennis is probably not gonna go through with it, but we decided we would look into it. So, we met with him. Then, on August 6th, I went to one of the Yarmouth Energy Committee meetings and, you know, just discussed it with that committee. And on August 20th, I met with Chris Clark to sort of get a feel of what the town might be looking at. And subsequently, we had a committee meeting. And the committee is only three people right now. Me, Charlie, and Barry. And Charlie and Barry are not really able to donate a lot of time to this. But I would be willing to be the solar coach for Harwich if and when we decide to do this. So, there's, I gave, I think I gave you guys a copy of the most recent RFP in your packet. We're not going through the whole thing. I'm gonna sort of highlight, starting on page four, there's a table that goes through the responsibilities of the Mass Center for Clean Energy, the responsibilities for the solar coach, the responsibilities for the municipality, and then the responsibility for the installers. And so, we're gonna focus today on what the town would be responsible for if we did this because we haven't done this yet. Where does this go? There you go. So, Solarize Mass is a state program. And it's basically trying to give citizens or residents of towns access to affordable solar power. And that's their goal. You can also opt into a Solarize Plus program where you can bundle PV with other types of energy efficiency, things like solar hot water, charging stations, battery storage, that type of thing. So, that's their goal. Communities can, almost any community in Massachusetts can participate as long as you're part of their renewable energy trust, which we are because we're through Cape Light Compact, that type of thing. You have to be the owner of the home in order to apply. How do you apply? You get the, the RFP. Now, the new RFP is not out yet. I heard from the Mass Clean Energy Council and they told me it'll be out early fall. So, I'm not exactly sure what early fall is. So, I'm assuming it sometime in September would be my guess is. This is not so much a competitive grant as it's a first come, first served kind of grant. They'll budget a certain amount of money for this program and then they'll process applications as they come in, until they run out of money. So, when we have the new one, we will definitely look through that. So, benefits, why would we want to do this? Well, the state does provide some money to cover the costs of advertising. Sometimes you can give a stipend to volunteers if, if that's what they decide to do. They also provide a lot of training and support. They have people that come down and, you know, sort of hold your hand as you're going through the, the whole process. And of, also, technical support. One of the, one of the things that would have to be done is an installer would have to be chosen. And that installer, the installers compete to be chosen for this. And one of the advantages is, is that you got a good installer who's gonna give you a really good deal. And most of the installers that have participated so far, they do a tiered system where if you get, like, say, 10 people sign up, the, it costs so much. But if you get 15 people to sign up, the price goes down. If you get 20 people to sign up, the price goes down again. And so, that's an advantage to working with another community in that you can get more people signed up and you get a much better deal. For people that are doing it, I know sometimes, if you've ever tried to think about getting solar panels on your roof, you know, there's a bunch of different companies. There's a bunch of different regulations that go with solar panels. And you don't wanna get cheated and you're trying to figure out what the best deal is. Well, this is gonna help residents have like a one-stop shopping experience where they can get it done without having to deal with everything, all the other little details themselves. They get lower monthly electric bills. They get an education about solar electricity and reduce their carbon footprint. Whole bunch of towns have done it. Closer to us, Wellfleet and Bourne have both participated. Wellfleet sort of really, they had a very successful program. And Wellfleet, they went back and did it again themselves to include all of the outer Cape. And so, they're, they're going gangbusters out there. So, this is just some of the things the town would have to agree to. When we, we decide to go forward and we get the official RFP, this is what the town would have to sign off on that they would do. One of them is to work with us on a timetable, be part of the installer evaluation team. There would be a, some member of the town would have to be involved with that. And very importantly, to involve all of our inspectors so that when a person is getting the system done, we help to kind of streamline all of that so it goes very smoothly for the homeowner. They, the town will also, to their, to the extent possible, allow the Solarize Committee access to mailing lists, the town website. And again, assist in, in streamlining the permitting process, marketing, you know. We would be looking for support from organizations in town. Not necessarily financial support, but access to newsletters or mailing lists or that type of thing to help get the, the word out. And the same for the, like, the town website. We would hope, would help us, give us a page on the town website for this. Also, this could involve some staff hours. I don't, I can't tell you what that would be, but there's, they, the program assumes there is a staff, paid staff person from the town that is going to assist in this. Website, town email, permitting. So, in, just in summary, the town would be supportive to the team. They could obviously support the RFP when it comes out. And again, ideally, the municipal representatives should be employed by the community, so. They, they really stress that we need to make sure that our, all of our inspections, building inspector, electrical inspector, that type of thing, they would be on board and know ahead of time that this is happening, because it could result in a slight increase in workload. I mean, more applications could come in that would need inspections. So, want to keep them in the loop. And those are just some Bourne, Wealth Fleet. Province Town also did it. So, what we're looking for tonight is not a, not necessarily a yes or a no. We're looking at interest. So, that when the RFP comes out, would this be something that the town could see themselves supporting? And I would have to be able to scare up about three more volunteers in order for me to really go forward with it. And the town of Yarmouth, I mean, they've got 15 people on their energy committee, so they're all set. But that's basically all we're looking for. Is it something that sounds interesting? Is it something the town could get behind, so that when we have more information, when the RFP actually comes out, is it something that I would bring to you or not?
Thank you, Valerie. Anyone questions, comments?
I guess the first thing I would have to know before I'd support it would be the, what would be the actual cost to the town of Harwich, and who would do what? So, that's going to be my first question.
Right. I think, basically, they want one person from the town to be on some of the committees. So, for example, on the committee that actually interviews the installers. They would like a town person on that committee. Otherwise, it's basically a liaison type of position. They're not really doing anything. The volunteers are supposed to do, like, all the work. But there has to be some person in the town who would be willing to be the town contact.
Just a pitch for our energy committee, anyone that's watching, we're looking for volunteers and a couple more members. So, that's one. And then the, you know, I get calls frequently by people in town that have had solar panels put on the roof, and they want to know how to get them off. Sold a bill of goods. Going to save energy, going to save energy, and their bills are higher now than they were before they put these solar panels on their roof.
Now, that usually ends up if you're leasing it, not buying it. And this program, the Solarize, this is what Massachusetts is trying to get rid of. They're trying to get the program so that the installers that are hired are vetted, and they have solid information, solid background, they have background checks, and blah, 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 all those things that you need to have. I have solar on my roof, and it has greatly reduced my electricity, as it's supposed to.
And then I guess I would ask, why did Dennis choose not to do it?
Dennis and Yarmouth now are having issues. And I think that... I think they were just going to let this one go.
Okay. So, I would like to look into that. Before I pledge my support, I would like to do a little homework myself.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Might I suggest that, I mean, this probably, it's great that we got the overview here, but we don't manage any of the employees in town. We manage the town administrator. Wouldn't we want to refer this to the administrator's office for him to vet what resources could be devoted, and what it would cost, and whether they think it's worthwhile, or?
Yeah.
Because it's premature for us to take any action without some recommendation from...
In my mind, we definitely had some discussion about that when Valerie came in. I wanted to make sure that the board, and this is a policy decision, does the board actively want to pursue facilitating that? If the board has expressed an interest, or does express an interest, then we can do the homework. I guess from my perspective, you know, it really depends on the amount of staff time that's going to be dedicated to it. Some of the requests are fairly straightforward, adding, adding parts to the website, isn't that big of a deal. The electrical inspectors and the inspection department already take in a lot of applications on solar. So, if we're able to educate people and make that process a little bit more efficient, that may not be a bad thing for the town. But I didn't want to really put a lot of time and energy in if there was no interest by the board in terms of pursuing it.
And I'm fine with that, as long as, I have some questions I'd like to get answered, maybe, you know, get started. You know, if we have the experience in Outer Cape, that might be a good place to start, is how much time has that?
Yeah, I mean, Dick, I know Dick Elkin very well, yeah. And I can get what, what Wealth, I can get him to give me what Wealth Fleet did. But Wealth Fleet's kind of the exception, because I think the town actually put some of their own money into it, to increase publicity and increase, you know, that outreach.
I'm sure it's for the common good, but I also find it interesting that you're, we're taking a government entity and pushing out the private contractors. What's the feedback been from the private contractors?
Well, it's a competitive bid, you know. So, the contractors are used to bidding on jobs. And so, this is just another bid that they have to put together. This time, they're bidding for, to be the Solarize contractor. You know, so it's not a lot different from any other bid that they might put together.
False notice may have, I, I have no problem going ahead, but I do have some questions. I'd like to get some more information on that.
Right. And it's, all we're, just information for you, and so that when Chris and I get together with the details, he has some sense, and I have some sense, if this is something. Eventually, you guys are going to have to sign the RFP, you know. So, we'll try to get all that information for you.
Don?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, that's kind of what I was saying. So, I guess the question for everyone here is, you have any interest in fleshing this out, in bringing it back?
Well, I think we need to flush it out before we go forward.
Well, that's my point, is...
Yeah, Michael?
I have no interest in having town administrator, who has a whole bunch of other things to do, flush out something that we may or may not be interested in. I think with the wastewater in East Harwich and this fast-tracking of DHY and everything else we have going on, I think that there's plenty in the Housing Trust. I would like to see Valerie come back with a few of the questions that we just asked.
Yep.
And kind of what the other towns are doing. And then, let's look at that information and then make that decision. But at this point, I wouldn't support having Chris chase solar.
Well, before we get there, how much time would it take to get some input, Chris?
I think we would have to have a preliminary meeting with the gentleman from Wealth Fleet to get a sense for what the time commitment is on the town.
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to Dick Elkin and see, because he's, he's like the local expert on this.
Let me say, Michael, this gives a feeling for what his involvement is in answering these questions.
All right. Do you want me to?
And just so we're clear, and just so I'm clear, we have a committee that does this. And we're asking the committee chair to do this, not Chris.
Right. We'll support, we'll take some support of Chris.
My understanding is, we probably have one or two meetings, just to get a sense for what the commitment from the town would be. And then, I need to try to identify a resource in the town if we're going to pursue that.
I think we're in agreement. It's got to be minimal. Okay?
Okay, so, I'll get back to Chris Clark with more information and let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is committee appointments for approval. Turn to Michael or Don, to either one. You toss a coin, who wants to take this?
Do you want me to do?
Go ahead.
I moved that we appoint Donna Kalanick to Community Preservation Committee as the selectman's appointee for full term, expiring 6/30/21. And that we appoint James Donovan, Community Preservation Committee, a full ex officio member from Real Estate and Open Space Committee, expires 6/30/2020.
Any, any discussion? Was there a second to that? I'll second it. So, any discussion?
Well, on the full term, full term's three years?
Not for the person, it's the term.
I know.
That's, that's the balance. There was somebody in that.
There's someone in there, yeah. Is that your question?
It's for, it's for completion of a term.
Yes.
Right. Okay.
And I, thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, I'm not going to belabor it, but based on what happened last time, I think Donna, we interviewed her, she's bright, she's going to be, she would be energetic. I think she'd be terrific, but I'm going to be abstaining based on what happened last week.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And one abstention. Sorry, 4-0-1.
Just one comment here. I think, I think it might be worthwhile, as we go forward, to not consider these jointly, consider each individual name. So, that's just a thought.
Moving on to E is Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod, rider first refusal. Chris, you want to?
So, Mr. Chairman, I think we do have somebody here from Habitat, so if I get this inaccurate, hopefully she'll jump up and correct me. The town has, well, actually, just to back up, there was a resident that had a house constructed and won the lottery to get into that house. And Habitat for Humanity was the one that constructed the house. Once the owner is in there, and we do have the letter from the owner, there are deed riders that are on the, on the unit. So, if a house is constructed, and let's say the market value is $300,000, and the affordable value is $120,000, that the deed rider has a necessity that the homeowner has to then have it sold through a similar process in which it was acquired, through a lottery, and to someone that qualifies for affordable housing. So, in this case, the original deed rider identified three entities that would be given a right of first refusal for this dwelling. So, one was the county, the other was Habitat for Humanity, and the third is the Board of Selectmen in Harwich. So, Habitat for Humanity, we did include in their letter, will not be exercising its option. I have been, have been informed that the county will not be exercising their option. And I just thought it would be appropriate to bring it to the Board of Selectmen to see if they wanted to exercise their option. In terms of, we did have a discussion at the Affordable Housing Trust on this topic. I don't think there was a clear decision made, one way or another, in regards to it. But there's probably two avenues for the town to go down. One avenue would be to kind of do the same process, if you would, that the county did and that Habitat did, and put it on the owner of the property to conduct the necessary process to have it be resold. And the reason for this is the resident wants to move, so she's moving on, which is what prompted this. But to have the resident do it, so we, you could just decline the right of first refusal, and then that would kick in. The second potential option would be to refer it to the Affordable Housing Trust, to see if the trust wanted to entertain going through that process and working with the homeowner to do that. When those two questions were raised to the trust, we did not get a definitive answer, one way or another, to which path the Affordable Housing Trust wanted to go down. Don's the vice chair, so he can certainly comment to the actions taken.
Don, do you have a comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. It is, it is not an insubstantial task that we would be undertaking, which is why we did not give an opinion on this. I suggest, if you have any inkling that you want to handle the process, that you ask Habitat as one of the parties involved, just how complicated this is. But the bottom line is, this is not a small issue.
And that was my discussion.
Through you, I mean, yeah, I was going to, what do you think we should do, Don?
I, I think we should just vote not to, you know, accept, not exercise a right of first refusal. There's a reason that people in line before us turned it down.
If we had this discussion, we're not in that business, so that's a, that's a problem I have with it. Any more discussion, or Ed?
Well, so, if we turn down the right of first refusal, then what happens?
Doesn't change the title.
I believe that the homeowner then would have to engage the services. We did identify someone that does this, so would have to obtain the services of a Realtor that has some specialty in resale of a affordable unit. There probably would be additional cost, because they would have to run the lottery. But they could put that cost into the purchase price. So, let's just say, as a, for instance, if it's $120,000 is the value of the house, and it's $5,000 to run the lottery, in this case, she would be able to have the Realtor do that work for her. And not have it pay, not have to pay out of her pocket, but pay out of the sale of it, proceeds of the sale.
Any more discussion? If not, Don?
I move that we don't exercise the right of first refusal.
Second.
Second.
Anyone else care to comment? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All closed? Unanimous? Chris?
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the contracts procurement, Hinkley's Pond contract amendment. That was solitude, Lake Madison.
It was item F that I would like to defer to Joe on the discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped item F. Joe didn't mean to leave you out here.
All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I've asked to have this come before you, simply for some direction. As you know, Griffin Rider and I are the primary procurement team to vet all of the procurements, and then make recommendations to, to both Chris and you. In reviewing the surplus goods policy, when we thought we might have to be disposing of surplus goods, being the gazebo, our reading of it indicates, you can see in item 2A, talks about solicit written bids and quotes, and item 2B, advertise an internet site. And we wanted some direction, or to have you refer to staff to work on, to incorporate the concept of auction. So, either the board can say that you think that's already included in the policy, or if you want the policy revised. My understanding is your policy on policies is to defer it to staff, and then bring it back for first reading, etc.
Right, then second reading, first and second, yeah. Anyone have a comment?
This is specific to the gazebo, or are we just looking?
No, this is actually in general. We, Griffin and I, actually, on July 23rd, were part of, you know, before the tornado. There was life before the tornado. We were participating in the Cape Cod Procurement Officers Meeting. And there was a presentation on auctions, and it's, it's a good potential avenue for the town to use, given the very low or no costs to the town. We just wanted to make sure that we have that ability to incorporate auctions in the disposition of surplus property.
So, this is still, this is still our, our decision, whether we want to go to auction out. This just gives us flexibility to do so.
Yep, exactly. And really, for auctions, what we see is, as we're going out to purchase either motor vehicles or equipment or things like that, if we've got a warehouse full of supplies, well, we can either, we can't bid for a brand name, but we can incorporate a parts list. If we go for a brand that doesn't use those parts, we could then auction off the parts, which is the easiest way to get the greatest return, rather than bids, quotes, or internet sale. So, it gives us more flexibility in procurement.
Michael, do you have a follow-up on this?
Yeah.
Don, you?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I mean, to Michael's point, I had occasion to talk with Robin last week about this. And it seems, like, quite apart from the policy, it's a whole separate issue, that they have interest in the gazebo, the cemetery commissioner, and they were talking about allocating some of the revolving funds to bring that over to Evergreen. And if that's what they want to vote to do, then this doesn't apply to that, to that transaction.
Right. And this, but this is a general discussion, all right?
Under section two.
You have another department.
Another, another department. That portion of it does.
But I agree, but she brought up that they feel like, they feel ethically that they would like to reimburse the town's direct account out of the cemetery account. And if that were to transpire, then...
Okay.
Yeah, just on that, it's not really surplus property if another town agency wants it, so the gazebo would not be part of this discussion.
Any other questions? Steve, Michael, Ed?
We can come back with a revised policy that includes the option of auction.
I think that's our, our consensus is to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, then I'll move to contracts. Chris? Chris, you wanna do this one? Joe?
Yep.
I'm gonna let Joe do it first.
First, I wanna explain that Heinz would be here, but he is returning from a trip. He asked if he was needed, and I said, if I were you, I'd keep driving, but, so here we are. What's presented in front of you is a, a change order to the original contract for Solitude Lake Management. And this incorporates the necessary testing, pre-treatment, during treatment, and post-treatment. And so when Heinz came to the procurement team, we reviewed all the options. We thought the best way to proceed would be just to do as a change order. The, the change being requested comes to about ten percent of the total contract, so it's well below the twenty-five percent rule as established by chapter thirty, thirty-nine M. And so the, the document that you have in your packet accomplishes the change order if the board so approves it. If it is approved, they'll be able to pre-test before pre-application. They're hoping to do that as soon as tomorrow or Wednesday. Then they'll apply the alum, and then they'll be able to have their baseline for further testing and monitoring.
Any questions, discussion? Michael?
The change, the money, where's the money coming from?
So this is still incorporated within the original appropriation through town meeting. Town meeting under Article fifty-seven of two thousand eight Annual Town Meeting Appropriated, five hundred seventy-five thousand for the project from Community Preservation, five hundred thousand of which was related to the alum, the seventy-five thousand which was the land side project. So this is still within the funding that's available related to the alum project.
And I think to date, you, you said you, you've, the contract is for three hundred and seventy?
The, the bid from Solitude Lake Management was three hundred forty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars.
So we're within the town meeting appropriation. Someone, I, I just have a, a comment that when this went before the Conservation Commission, it was, it was approved, that included enough funds to do what, what has been considered a normal monitoring funds to do the work, to complete the project. Conservation Commission, in my mind, an overabundance of caution and of interest in gathering some data that they couldn't find in literature anywhere, of what was more of a long-term effect on Bethany organisms and other, asked that additional monitoring be, be done. And so this addition was a, was a function to get their approval, do additional monitoring from the commission. The original bid did include some monitoring, but not to their satisfaction, just, just some background. Ed, and then Don?
Move approval of the contract change order with Solitude Lake Management in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Second for discussion.
Okay, Don, you have a?
Yeah, that was, the thing I wanted to do is have a discussion, based on what Michael asked, what the chair asked. I'm trying not to sound natty, but when we do a contract, the contract, the cover sheet, check sheet is one thing. But I feel really strongly that when we're doing stuff like this, that instead of us verbally asking at the, at the selectmen's table, well, how about this, and do we have the money for that? If we had a narrative where there is actually literally a person saying, this is the deal, this is how much money was involved, we, and so-and-so is recommending action by the board. Because if you don't do that, it'll never be memorialized in our minutes because it's way too big a discussion for, for us to get into all of those things. And it's not gonna be in the agenda packet because it didn't exist. So if we could just have a cover letter for things like this that say, here are the issues, here's what this accomplishes, and I'm recommending that you actually do this.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just as a follow-up, totally agree, and, and as you've seen before, the, the new procurement team, that's exactly what we strive for. Quite frankly, this was a, a project and change order process that had been in play before really Griffin and I got our feet under us. So we had, we had a delay in trying to get our due diligence done on that. There's a few things I would say that, you know, the, the output from the, the vendor, the way in which they presented it, it's not standard for our procurement team going forward. Contract language and all of that would have been driven by us through KP Law. It has all been vetted, and Mr. Chairman, you were correct about the Conservation Commission element of it. That was one of the things that, that held us up, trying to, to balance the DEP, Conscom and all of that. And, and really the driving factor in all of this is the procurement team did not wanna be the reason why this project didn't go forward. Very tight timeframes, and it's not how we do our standard operating procedure, but didn't wanna be the, the reason why it was not going forward.
And, and that's fine, I, I, I'm not looking for any kind of an apology, but you know, just going forward, if we standardize this so that people have the ability to go back and research it from their homes, that would be terrific.
And Michael, you have a?
I just wanna know who the authorized signature will be.
You can have the chair sign it, it's over twenty-five thousand, so.
So it's part of the motion to have the chair sign it? And that's, I second that.
Okay, thank you, Michael, bringing that up. Any more discussion? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? Town administrators' reports?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, a few things tonight, just, I just wanted to announce that we did have, we went out to bid on an appraisal on the Deacon's Folly project, so we have awarded that, and that work should commence, be commencing shortly. On, just as a reminder for boards and committees, that the FY twenty deadline for Community Preservation Committee applications is October first at four P M. I know the Affordable Housing Trust will be doing at least two applications. I'm not aware of a wide variety. Actually, I shouldn't say that, on the Community Preservation, I know that Recreation has a couple of applications that they are considering. I did attend a, a meeting, and I believe that Recreation, in partnership with Monomoy Regional School, will be doing something on the playground over at the elementary school, Harwich Elementary School. At your suggestion, Mr. Chairman, on a, you, you've asked to have staff put together some material, maybe do a budget workshop or an overview of some of the pressures that we have and a better explanation of the budget. I, I think a lot of folks at home may not get that we have Proposition Two and a half, but there are elements of Proposition Two and a half, such as the debt exclusions that go above that threshold, and what, what are we in fact getting when we have the tax bill go out and break that out? So Carol Coppola is probably gonna do the, the lead presentation on that, but we are working on putting together the material. Once we have the material done, I would be asked for the board to see if we could do a off-night meeting. I think the overview of the budget probably would take an hour or two to kinda have that discussion. And I think doing it within the confines of a regular meeting may be somewhat rushed. So, and once we have a, a date for when we'll have that material and that package ready to go, maybe ask for the board if they could meet on a Thursday night or Wednesday night, whichever night seems to be best for folks. We'll try to ask through you, Mr. Chairman, to, to have that be scheduled.
Yeah, I thought, you know, we have a lot of discussions on the budget, and the rules seem to change a little bit. Thought it'd be good to have a workshop to, and Carol's gonna, as Chris says, putting stuff together. I'd like to, if, if you guys, if you people, you know, think it's a good idea, I'd also like to invite FinCom as they look at the budget as well, so at least we have the same. You know, occasionally, we all need to be educated, reeducated, so that's my push on this.
Yeah, there was Capital Outlay had expressed an interest in attending as well, so I, I wouldn't mind reaching out. I think that was a, a suggestion that you had made as well.
So I would suggest we schedule a workshop at some point to, to do this, spend an hour or so.
And then the, the last two items here, just quick items. It was referenced earlier about Team Rubicon coming in. I did attend a meeting, actually Emily and Carolyn were there on the Southern Baptist Group. They wound up helping about thirty homes in Harwich. And their effort was to go on to private property and help people that were in need. Not something the town could do, in essence, go on to private property. But I thought that that, I attended at least part of the overview, I didn't get a chance to stay for the entirety. But about thirty homes in Harwich were, were helped by the group that came from all over. And then I did include in the packet, there was a request previously, I think you had mentioned to me against chairman, about Moss Hill, there was some parking issues and what was the enforcement. So the police chief did provide some of those ones that had been made. At least from reading the reports, it seemed that the, the parties may have caught wind that we were gonna do enhanced enforcement, and the issue has somewhat, you know, resolved itself.
And I press this because, you know, people have complaints, but this one was turned into a safety concern. They really wanted some action on.
That concludes my comments, see you, Mr. Chairman.
Michael?
I could, before you get on to Selectmen's Report, the Southern Baptist Group, I asked two weeks ago what process we followed as far as making sure that we were covered for liability for them sleeping in our communities or cultural center, and didn't get an answer, so do we have an answer for me?
Yeah, under the policy that we have for my, our insurance company, volunteers that do work on behalf of the town are covered as part of our general policy.
Okay, and I would just ask that going forward, if we're gonna have people sleeping in our buildings, we should make some sort of provision so that everybody knows what's going on and the lights aren't on there at, you know, midnight with people tramping around the building with other people's property in there.
Sure.
Good, yes. Okay. Selectmen's report, Steve, I'll, I'll start with you.
Just, just one quick comment, I was able to attend today the, the hearing that was conducted relative to the noise complaint. And just a, just a general comment, I, I thought that, you know, the town administrator, the police chief, and the, and the officers that were there just represented the town very, very well. And I think they're gonna come to a good constructive conclusion for this, so I was very impressed.
Thank you, Steve, Michael?
So Larry, I would just say I appreciate your response to me today in the email. I've asked several questions over the last two and a half months that I don't have answers for. I'm gonna expect within the next couple of weeks, we can wrap that up, because I think it's, it's gone on a little too long. So I'll only ask a few tonight. First, the letter of thank you to all that came to help us with the tornado, where, where do we stand with that? There was a lot of communities that came here, a lot of other towns.
We need to put that together.
Yeah, we actually, Mr. Chairman, through, through you, we actually got a listing today of all the groups. We're trying to identify all the groups, so we will put that letter together. I was gonna have the board sign it, so we can have that for the next meeting, but we do have the list of everyone that helped.
All right.
Second one would be, I had another community reach out to me, and I didn't, as practice, get in touch with our department head, but another community reached out and wanted to know why we were a couple of months late signing the contract for the adult daycare program for the town of Orleans. Apparently, administration over there has tried to reach out to our administration, and they're not getting a response. Is there a reason we're not?
We have the contract, we were vetting it through our contract process. It hasn't been a long time, that just came in fairly recently.
Well, the fiscal year ended when?
June thirtieth.
And what day is today?
Their request came over fairly recently.
I don't think so, but please look into that, I think that's an important program for people in the town.
There we go.
Phase two wastewater, a lot of concern, and I think that we have lost a lot of people in East Harwich by losing confidence in this board. I'd like to put on the agenda as soon as possible, Larry, some of the questions I asked you is why we were told we had to vote the contract, we were gonna lose the zero percent, why we were told we were gonna save fifteen million, why we're digging down twenty-eight feet on some roads and doing a, there's a lot of questions, and I think people, people need the answers. So I would ask that you put a broad agenda item out so that we can have that conversation sooner than later.
Yeah, fair enough. Okay. Ed?
Well, just invite you all to the festival, have a good time.
Don?
I'm staying on the lighter side myself, two things. First of all, hats off to Cindy in the Chamber of Commerce, because I don't think that everybody understands it, but the parade is a chamber activity. It's terrific, it's Norman, Norman Rockwell-ish, it's small-town America, it's terrific. Wanna see it continue on into the future, it was just a wonderful time. Secondly, I wanna, I try to take note of momentous events when they happen. And Hope Cavendish, wonderful woman, a hundred and one years old, just passed away this past week. She was, when she first got married, she was Hope Whitcomb. And Mr. Whitcomb started Pine Oaks Phase One. And in incredible coincidence, she, after he passed away, she married Mr. Cavendish, and she became Hope Cavendish. He was the founder of Pine Oaks Phase Two. She was just a lovely individual, and a celebration of her life is going to be at the First Congregational Church this Friday. I hesitate to say it, Friday the thirteenth at eleven A M. But wonderful person.
Okay, thank you, Don. entertain a motion to adjourn? Second.